Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Kent Town Account Planning Board Meeting for April of 2025. Could we please stand for the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation, founded on the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Before we get going with the agenda, we'd like to, for the draft, the minutes for March's meeting. Has everybody read the minutes?
Mm-hmm.
Can I get a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll move to accept the March 13 minutes.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, first up is Beresford.
Good evening. Jason Snyder with Beadie and Watson, representing the applicant, David Beresford. Since the last meeting, Bruce had some comments. We basically, we put the stormwater, the phosphorus removal that he was looking for, for discharges into the, to mitigate the stormwater discharges into the lake. So, we proposed a, like a little wetland, a little pocket gravel wetland at the, below the house, between the house and the lake. It seemed to be a little bit more visual, and I guess it's a little bit more than what he was anticipating as far as disturbance and free removal and things of that nature. So, we're gonna work with him to tone it down a little bit, I guess, and incorporate some more plantings and, as opposed to the grading and the basin aspect of it. So, I guess the goal tonight really is to, as long as there's, John doesn't have anything, I don't think Bruce has anything, the last time I spoke with him, we'd like to get this on administrative track so that we can work with Bruce on the specifics of the, exactly what he's looking for in terms of the mitigation, the revisions to the mitigation that we provided.
Good evening. For the record, my name is John Andrews. I'm the engineer to the planning board. This matter is on tonight. You have to open an adjourned public hearing. Both Bruce and I have comments. My comments are, basically have been substantially resolved. Bruce's comments, as Mr. Snyder indicated, a deal with resolving a wetland, and I think he's right. What he proposed, although it will work, and it will work nicely, I think was a lot more intrusive than anybody anticipated. So, I think he's correctly summarized Bruce's intent, which is to tone it down and perhaps mitigate it with plantings and maybe a little less the site disturbance. So, that needs to be worked out between Bruce and Mr. Snyder. But, the way this looks, you can open the public hearing, take public comment, and then depending upon the substantive nature of the public comment, you could entertain closing the public hearing. I'm not sure Bruce is comfortable moving it to administrative track yet until he's got that resolved, but I leave that to your discretion.
Okay. Okay, we'd like to open the public hearing for the Kent Lakes Avenue. Who would like to second that?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anybody here that would like to speak on this property? Okay. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, I don't think we will move it to administrative track until this gets cleared?
Bruce is satisfied.
Yes.
So, if you could, Jason, reach out to Bruce?
Sure.
And do you need us to reach over by email, even though he's not physically on the job yet, but if you give him an email, he will work with you.
Okay. All right, very good. Thank you very much.
Next is Zircon Property.
Good evening. Rick Bolander. Nothing new to report on plan-wise, layout-wise. We're still working through and finalizing stormwater design and septic design with the Health Department. We're actually meeting with Mr. Andrews tomorrow to do the soils testing for the stormwater, and then we can finalize that, hopefully get approval from the Health Department, and then have that wrapped up.
Okay.
Again, you do have a comment memo from myself, and substantially it's dotting i's and crossing k's. This was a previously developed site. I'm not sure how many people know that. There was an existing driveway, existing house, existing garage. They're just kind of taking all that stuff down and putting in new. So, there's not a lot of issues here. What we would recommend is that the board consider setting a public hearing for the May meeting. And there aren't any, on my end, substantive issues, so it is good to go to public hearing. And what you would do is set the public hearing for May and direct the applicant to address all the open issues, which it seems their intent is to do. And I will confirm that we are meeting tomorrow. We don't melt in the rain, so we'll get it done.
Okay. Has anybody got any questions?
No.
No.
Okay, so, I'd like to make a motion to set a public hearing for the property of 592 Levingtonville Road in Kent, New York, for the meeting of May 8, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is that, that's, that's all we can do tonight?
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Morocho Properties. Sorry about that.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. We've been here before. We, this is 494 Levingtonville Road. It is a existing 10-acre lot. The owner wants to subdivide, make one smaller lot for a single-family dwelling. Septic field testing has been done with the Board of Health. I did file the DEC permits and the DEP permits. As part of the DEP permitting, we'll have to redo the field testing with someone from DEP witnessing that test. But the soil percolation rates, all the deep test pits that were done with the Board of Health were satisfactory to the Putnam County Board of Health, so we're good to go there. We did redesign the stormwater. Basically, the house, if you remember what it was before, it was a much larger house. We shrank the footprint of the house to something a little bit more manageable. We are, we are within the 100-foot wetland buffer, therefore that's why we pulled the DEC permit and pulled the DEP permit. So, other than that, we've prepared the SWIP. The notice of intent was prepared. So, I have Mr. Andrews' memo, I have Bruce's memo, just some minor things to just take care of. We'll probably make one more submission, and I think we'll be good to go. Did talk to Anthony Frichion from Board of Health. He's basically, is waiting for our subdivision approval before we finalize the Board of Health approval.
So, as Andy mentioned, he does have a memo from myself, he does have a memo from Bruce. Those issues will need to be resolved. We would ask that the board direct the applicant to address those issues. In looking through the record on this one, we've never completed the secret process. This is an unlisted action. You folks are doing an uncoordinated review. I've spoken with Bruce. I think we're close enough that most of the issues are on the table, and he has done a fairly good job of accommodating your earlier comments, switching things around, moving the house, and minimizing all the impacts to the maximum extent that he can. So, what we would recommend is that you consider authorizing preparation of the EAF Parts II and III with a neg deck and a resolution for adoption for your consideration at next meeting. That helps us get the process going. We can then schedule a public hearing after that and do a few other things, but we got to complete secret first.
Okay. Anybody? Any questions?
No comment.
Okay. Like to make a motion to authorize the preparation of the EF Parts II and III with a neg deck, negative declaration for the May meeting, which I believe is May 8, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Ezana?
Good evening, members of the board. If you remember, we were here last month to present the project to you. It's a fairly simple project. It involves some earthwork to flatten the rear yard of the property. We have designed a balanced cut-and-fill. We don't anticipate importing any material to the site. The site, the project site is not within any environmental critical areas or buffers. We received the memorandum from Andrews. We acknowledge all comments, not nothing of surprise. We recognize, given the area of disturbance over 5,000 square feet and is located within the east of Holson Watershed, we're gonna have to file for SWIP. We had acknowledged that in the application. Any questions about the project?
No. Can I do now?
Here again, this one's pretty straightforward. You have a comment memo, and realistically, again, it's not substantive, no substantive issues. It's dotting i's and crossing k's. As the gentleman indicated, this is in a, the rear yard of an existing house. It's basically a cut-and-fill operation to give them a little leveler, pardon my new word there, a little more leveled backyard. And realistically, it's a relatively simple project. We would recommend, in this case, which is slightly unusual, but we recommend that you waive the public hearing. And the waiver is, makes sense because it's an existing rear yard. It's cut-and-filled. There's no impact to any of the surrounding properties, and it's basically, this homeowner is going to endure some inconvenience in his rear yard for a couple of weeks to get it squared away. So, we would recommend that you waive the public hearing, requirement in this case, and further, that you move this to administrative track. All that's left is basically resolving some of the issues, and that can be done between Bruce, myself, and the applicant's engineer, and no longer has to come back to the board.
Okay. Who would like to make the motion to waive the public hearing for the tax map 11-1-45, and also to move, we can do it as one resolution, right? And move it to administrative track?
I'll make the motion.
Who seconds?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Moody Property?
Good evening. Joseph Rena, Coastal Site Sign Consultants. Since we were last before you, we, with the board's permission, we did a controlled tree cutting of only the area of where the house and driveway are gonna go for the time being. We also performed our testing for stormwater. John was out for the deep hole test, and we've performed infiltration tests with satisfactory results. We're in the process of completing our SWIP and formalizing the design of the stormwater, and that was the last piece that we had to do to get, be totally compliant for submission, which we'll be getting in next week.
You're making me work, right?
I know.
As Mr. Rena indicated, we, I did observe the field testing. Situation seemed pretty good. They did do their controlled tree clearing. It was conducted in fairly strict compliance with the plan that was approved. They cut the trees, they stacked them neatly, the minimal site disturbance. So, that was a, that was a win. I do have a memo, stated 4-2. Again, it needs to be resolved, as Mr. Rena indicated, and I'm sure they're working on that. There's really not any substantive issues. I think Bruce's, Bruce has made a commitment to get out there before the May meeting to validate that there's no wetlands or there's no wetland issues. So, what we would recommend is that you consider setting a public hearing for the May meeting. And it is, it is ready, and if Mr. Rena makes a submission in the meantime, we may be in a position to advance it farther at that meeting, depending on how much of my comments are addressed.
Okay. Anybody have any comment? Who would like to make a motion to set a public hearing for 221 Resecute Street, Kent, New York, tax map 11-48-3, for our May 8, 2025 meeting?
I'll move.
Who seconds?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Good night.
Okay, good night. Before we move on to the next one, I just want to just make a statement, is that we recognize that, you know, there's a lot of people in here for the next matter that's on the docket. But I just want to emphasize that this is not a public hearing. Okay, so, and as a courtesy to you, we're gonna allow a few people to speak tonight. But if you could limit your comments to about three minutes, we'd appreciate that, and try and keep it to a limited amount of people. And just be kind of, you know, think about, anybody that comes up that answers the question you're gonna ask, don't, we don't, don't be, you know, wasting your own time as well as everybody else's. So, and I just wanted to let you know that this is actually just to, for a balloon test. This is what they're in front of us right now for, and there's nothing being voted on tonight. Just letting everybody know that in advance. Okay? So, we are moving on to Homeland Towers.
Good evening. For the record, my name is David Kenny. I'm attorney with Snyder &amp; Snyder, here tonight to represent the applicant's Homeland Towers and Verizon Wireless. I have with me Klaus Wimmer, Regional Manager of Homeland Towers. As the chairman stated, we're just looking to do a balloon test. We met with the board earlier in, actually in December, and we've been noticing a balloon test since March, but we were trying to do it on the weekends only so that there's more opportunity for visibility of the public to see the balloon test. However, we're running out of days for, before the leaves come on the trees. The weather has prevented us from actually floating the balloon on a weekend. The wind has been too strong. One day, we tried to float it, but the fog rolled in, so there was visibility concerns. So, again, we're trying to float the balloon while the leaves are off the trees. So, you have the worst-case scenario being the most visible time of the year to see the actual balloon. But again, the balloon test, while important, there is going to be photos taken from all different vantage points around the surrounding area, and we will do photo simulations of the tower. And I think that visual analysis report is really gonna be more representative of the visibility of the tower. But we would like to float the balloon on a weekday. We're anticipating, it looks like there might be good weather for Monday to float the balloon. Doesn't look like the rest of the week, next week, is gonna have good weather, but that seems to be the next good weather date for us. We could confirm that tomorrow, but we're here tonight to ask the permission of the board so that we can do a balloon float on, on a weekday.
I'm not gonna presume to speak for our attorney, because he's not here, but the decision to float the balloon on the weekend was actually made by the applicant, and there's no requirements in our code either way. I think it was a topic of discussion, and I think it's, it was the intent of the board. My understanding is to get the balloon test done. And if that means doing it on a weekday, then go with God and do it on the weekday so that we can have a representative test in place. And I know there were some discussions you may have had with Joe about notices and other things, so as long as he's satisfied, that's good. But I think the board just needs to confirm for the applicant that you're good with a weekday, and any questions or discussions you have on that basis, and then we'll go from there.
The only thing I would say is, yeah, I have no problem, me personally, I'm just speaking for myself, I have no problem with during the week, but it has to be, as I've said, proper notified and noticed.
So, the way we've been doing it is the same way with the weather cancellation. So, we've already done a notice in a mailing notice as well as a sign notice. So, now the issue is, is that what we did was we noticed it for weekend dates and each consecutive weekend thereafter. But each Friday, we would make a game time decision whether or not there'd be good enough weather to float the balloon. So, we've been informing the board and the town whether or not it's a go or no-go the Friday before. So, we're at a public meeting now stating that our next intention is to float it on a Monday. Joe seemed to be amenable to the fact that the manner that we've been noticing the cancellations can be the manner that we noticed the weekday floats. Again, noticing it is important. We wanna make sure people are aware of it, but again, that visual analysis report with the photo simulations, that's really gonna be, I think, more representative of where the tower will be visible from. So, we would just ask that the board allow us to, as we've been noticing the cancellations, to email the board and have some sort of posting on the town website.
As long as it's good with our attorney.
I confirmed with him before the meeting, I don't wanna...
As long as my attorney says it's good, or the planning board attorney says they would notice and it's good, that's fine with me. Anybody else wants to talk?
Well, I think there's plenty of people here. I mean, it's almost like public notice already.
Right.
Why I made sure to say the next date that we're looking to float right now, yeah.
Right, so it might be as good as we get for that. And you didn't get a chance to speak, so.
Yeah. But if there's anything else that the town wants us to do as far as giving some sort of written notice that it can be posted on the website, we're happy to accommodate. I think people are well aware of the project now. I think what the goal is, is we wanna make sure that we can get this balloon test so we can complete the application, and then likely get to a public hearing so we can hear the comments from the public, and we can try to do our best to respond to all of their comments.
Anybody else on the board? We're not making any, we're not, we're just, you can voice your own personal thing, but we, it's up to Joe if everything's okay. Yes, since he's not a tenant. So, just please state your name when you get up there, and I think there should be a sheet of paper if you can sign.
Yeah, I'll sign it, of course. I'll start talking.
I'm hard of hearing, so if everybody could please speak up, I appreciate that. The microphone does not get to us.
Fair enough. My name's Dan Mulroy. I live across the street from the proposed site. I just do have a question, a clarification for the board. What is the notification to? And is that supposed to go to the residents in the area, or is that just a public statement on the website to the board and the community? Just a point of clarification, question.
Well, we were expecting our attorney to be here right now, but we're running just a slight ahead of schedule, which is not.
Fair enough.
It's unusual. But, John, do you?
I don't have the code for that aspect.
Yeah.
I would put, I would defer.
We should get an answer here.
Sure, absolutely.
Have they been written notices, mailed?
Absolutely. So, we did mailing notices, and we did, a sign was posted at the property that noticed the balloon test.
Hey, if I can ask everybody who's here, please just hold your comment and let this be orderly. I'll be more aggressive.
Sure. So, it was a mailing radius to the property owners within, I believe it was 500 feet of the property. So, we did a mailing notice to those people within 500 feet. So, 500 feet of the property, that's what's required by the code. So, there is a specific code that says for the notice procedures for the balloon test, so that was complied with. That was actually the, the proof of that was submitted to the board, and that's how we were able to start the attempts to do the balloon test back in March. Again, the way it was noticed was that you had an original date, and then we said consecutive weekend dates thereafter. What we've discussed with the, with the board's attorney is that the cancellations due to weather were noticed by informing the town that the weather wasn't gonna be conducive for a balloon float, and that we would move on to the next weekend. And that's what I've understood from Joe, would be acceptable for noticing the weekday dates, that we would inform the town.
And the notice that, as you said, within the 500-foot radius, are they certified or are they just?
I'd have to double-check the code. I believe it was certified mailing, but I'll have to double-check the code.
I believe they're the green cards for the...
I have the information with me. I can actually double-check in two minutes.
Good.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, maybe we wait for the attorney to get here to clarify what the code is, whether there has to be a notification for each additional test when there is delay. The only notification that's gone on to residents is the first initial one that was certified mail. There is a sign, however, that sign is blew over weeks ago, so it is not representative. Additionally, I want to state that the area there is divided across the deconic, so residences that potentially up, whatever the actual distance are, that are across the deconic wouldn't see that sign, because they don't traffic that road there. So, I just wanna make that a point of clarification for the, for the board there. So, I'll make this brief as I can. So, I say that Dan Mulroy, live across the street. I'm a former Navy SEAL, spent 10 years, still Team Six. I've had cancer twice, most recently a year ago. I'm here representing the 62 residents, 100% of the residents of Portentown Hill Road, and then a majority of residents that live within a 1-mile radius of the proposed site, who are in opposition of this. That petition was submitted to Vera, I think there's a copy there, as well as one other additional document with some additional information. First, I wanna say, hey, we're not against technological advancement. We're not against a tower, like we all live in this day and age. I think we're just opposed to the location of this tower and its proximity to people's houses. Very simply, I don't think there's a defined need for this. I appreciate your time listening to us. Homeland Studies from 2011, that's 14 years ago. First point there is, is that an appropriate time to make any decisions about cell towers, when technology advances at the rate that it does currently, right? 2011, we couldn't imagine having satellite communications with our cell phones. Today, depending on their carrier, you can do that, right? And so, we're making decisions there. Number two, point here, in their own town, in their own plan, 2011, PierCon states that it's not a viable solution at Portentown Hill, and that Shenandoah Mountain would be a more desirable location, because Portentown Hill is actually within the valley and below two mountain ranges. And so, that the applicable effective range has actually diminished from there. Second, I'm sorry, but that wasn't in the town plan, because Shenandoah Mountain's not in the town of Kent, it's in Dutchess County, and therefore wouldn't be part of the town plan, Kent plan. The third piece is, the residents there, all the ones we talked to, nobody has an issue with cell service in the area. And they live in, commute on the deconic in all the surrounding areas. Fourth, if you referenced the document that was submitted earlier today, you'll see there's already three towers in this surrounding area. The proposed site is also in the valley, as Homeland has stated in their own plan. The biggest piece here that I just want to call the attention is that the other towers in the area are not Verizon, which Homeland represents, right? There are other carriers. And so, the true benefactor of this proposed site is not actually the community. It's Verizon. So, I just wanna make that known. Ultimately, the real issue here for residents is the risk of taking when you put a tower close to residential areas, right? I live 200 yards from it. There's two other families here, one of the towns here is here currently, little kids. We have an NYPD police officer, Tim Carter, his wife, Megan Collins Carter, daughter of town Kent judge. And the concern is the health effects. And there's numerous studies that are stated that there's a free-time cancer risk when you are in proximity to a cell tower. Now, there's evidence on both sides to that argument, and I will admit that. However, today's day and age, the preponderance of caution needs to be taken. And like many other localities in the area, have actually mandated that cell towers are with, not within a certain distance to residential areas, schools, first responders, and hospitals. So, all this to say, we're not against the technology, not against a tower, but we would hope that the board would recognize that the plan they're going off of is 14 years old. years old. Additionally, there's plenty of open space in that area that could be utilized, and we would encourage, and if there is actually a need, that A, a plan, a more recent study is done, but then also we look at other areas there, or some of the existing infrastructure in the area, those street towers that we noted. Thank you.
Okay. I don't mean to be the bearer of bad news, but I just got a text from Mr. Arioli. He's basically stuck, he may not be here till 8:30. But in point of fact, to also answer the question, the code requires a mailing to neighboring property owners located within 500 feet of the site by certified mail. And I'm assuming that that was done, and I think the actual certifications were delivered to the planning board, if I'm not mistaken, so...
I don't know whether you want to wait for Joe, or...
No, at this stage, I think we might be done by then.
Is there a question of that? Maybe this is for when he arrives, is that for each subsequent rescheduling? And that's why we put that on question, what that needs to be protocolled.
What you're asking is each time they reschedule, is that what you're asking?
Well, each time one is planned, whether it's rescheduled or not, how is that notification processed, and how are residents, and Appalachian Trail, and all the other members who have a stake notified of that? That's just a question for the Board.
If he doesn't make it, we will make sure he gets the question, and we'll have, the planning board will have an answer. Appreciate it, thank you.
And I think, is it you that sent the email? Who sent the email? Yeah.
It was me.
So, okay. At least we have your email now. Just, yeah, I'm just saying to remind you, you can come up writing up above it, and you can write your name in that. As I said, it's not a public hearing, it's just for a balloon test right now, so...
Well, I did prepare a statement, so I'm just going to read it.
You can just say your name as well.
Okay, yes, my name is Megan Lombardi. Can I say that in here? But anyways, good evening, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Megan Lombardi. I live with my husband and our two young daughters, ages one and four, at 73 Horton Town Hill Road, directly next to the proposed cell tower site. I just want to say, I lived in New York City for years, but I found peace and joy in the Hudson Valley. Weekends up here gave me what the city could never give me: space, nature, clarity. And I loved it so much that I bought my first home here, which is now owned by the Mulroy's. And after I met my husband, who lived down the street, I decided to sell that home and join him. And over the past decade, I have watched him shape the land, literally with his back in his hands, moving stone, building terraces, building a dream for us, creating a home we dreamed of passing down to our daughters one day. A home rooted in the quiet rural beauty that makes the region so special. And now that's at risk of being destroyed. A 150-foot cell tower has no place in an R-80 Rural Residential Zone. This zoning exists for a reason, which is to preserve open space, low-density living, and natural views. Approving this tower, and I know that's not what you're doing right now, but it doesn't just violate the purpose, it sets a precedent, like what stops the next tower, the next commercial incursion. This is how rural communities are lost, not in one dramatic moment, but through quiet, irreversible decisions. And the person allowing this to happen, he doesn't even live here. He lives in Westchester, far from the visual and emotional impact, profiting off of a decision that would harm a community that he's not even a part of. And this isn't just any tower, it's as tall as the Statue of Liberty from foot to torch, about the height of a 15-story building or a Boeing 737 stood upright, at least two and up to three times taller than the average tree in the area. And it's not even placed just flat on the ground, it's planned on a hill that already rises 65 to 100 feet above the surrounding homes in the Taconic. The total impact, nearly 250 feet of steel dominating the ridge line, I mean, it's a permanent scar on our rural landscape. If there's truly a need, which seems unclear, then other sites should be considered, sites further away from homes and from schools. The proposed location is just minutes from the Dutchess County line. Dutchess County, East Fishkill, New York State shouldn't just be aware of this, they should also be part of the conversation. And they should be considered as potential hosts themselves. We can't keep fighting these types of battles just town by town, which is what it seems like happens. And our region deserves coordinated planning, smarter siding, and accountability. Like Dan said, we're not against progress, we're not against connectivity, we're against careless development, and we're for protecting the places that we love, and the communities that we've worked hard to build. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do they have one more?
No.
Hello. Hello. My name is Robert Boosash, I'm a resident of Horton Town, that's what we have to call I had a longer statement, but I made it shorter for you, so I hope you appreciate that. So, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm really here to speak about the environmental concerns of this proposed plan. So I read your letter to the applicant, and I appreciate the actions that you're already considering and have requested. As you've noted in your letter to the applicant, the site, proposed site, lies within a sensitive ecological area and may support rare plants and wildlife, including one federally threatened species, the bat, I think, some sort of bat. In addition, you may not realize that nearby is a bird sanctuary, is part of Fonstock. It's been shown that cell towers, especially ones of this tall, kill, I have the figure of four to five million birds each year, so due to collisions and entanglement. So at the very least, should this, you consider this going through, that we should wrap the wires to prevent entanglement, especially from raptors. But I think, being that it's a quarter mile away, that's a serious consideration. Additionally, I'd like to, because of the environmentally sensitive area, I'd like to call for a three-season environmental study to be done on the site before anything proceeds. It's because wildlife isn't static, they come and go with the seasons, you know, and a one-time review would give us an adequate snapshot of what's needed, you know, because environmental protection, it shouldn't be about property lines, but especially considering the parkland nearby. Additionally, there's concerns about the Taconic State Parkway with a project like this falling under Type 1 regulation. It could require a full environmental assessment forum and possibly a full environmental impact statement. There's more that I agree with you, that you've already made statements on. Beyond the ecological damage, the tower would also permanently scar the natural beauty of our landscape, negatively affecting the residents' views and property values. That's no small thing. The structure would be visible for miles, miles, disrupting views from Fonstock, Appalachian Trail, and the Taconic. All three are, the latter, the Taconic being a national scenic byway and federally recognized historic resource. Honestly, because the site is surrounded by those three things, I think it's hard, it'd be hard pressed to find a worse place, being that it's like kind of triangulated around them, but that's another side. So let's notify all these organizations, three organizations, which have a vested interest in this, you know, interest in preserving the natural beauty of the location about this project, including the Appalachian Trail Conservancy, the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation and Historic Preservation, and the New York State Department of Transit. As we've talked about, there's not really actually a need for this cell tower. The study is over a decade, a decade old, almost 15 years. I've been there, I've been in the area for 20 years, and I've had Verizon for more than 15 years. I've walked up and down that road, driven around the area, up and down the Taconic. I've walked the trails, I've never lost service. We just don't need it. I have Verizon, and they were wanting to put a tower in place that we have great cell coverage, so there's that. So that's about it. I'm cutting it short for you. Thank you, I appreciate your service to the community.
Thank you for making it brief and to the point, thank you.
Would you like me to address any of them now, or...
No, not really, because it's not a public hearing, so we're just... So you've got one right now, because as we were saying, unless you want to wait till 8:30...
Not particularly, but whatever the Board would like.
Yeah, it's okay. Once we find out, we...
Is anybody else from the community going to speak? Is there a question?
No, it's not a public hearing, and as we said, just a few people, we're, you know, just allowing a few people to make a speech tonight, to speak. And that, when the public hearing comes, then everybody will have a good chance to...
Will there be a better notice for when there's a public hearing?
Public hearing, we always set the public hearing here the month prior, and it gets sent out to Vera, it gets publicized in the news, doesn't it?
And I believe the code requires an additional mailing notice by the applicant for the public hearing, so there will be another mailed notice to the people within 500 feet, as well as another sign posted for the public hearing. And I just want to say, I did hear all of the comments tonight, we'll have responses to them by the public hearing.
But that notification to 500 people is not enough.
It's 500-foot radius.
It's not having a debate here.
No, it's, sorry, excuse me, sorry, excuse me, excuse me. It's just, what we're saying is, the procedure for setting a public hearing is to send out, that's what we do with every piece of property that comes across.
And if you wish, if you wish, what we've been known to do, if you leave an email address with the planning department, Vera Patterson, we will mail, we will send you an email once the public hearing notice is set and the public hearing has been established. Again, it's out of courtesy, it's not, we have a code we have to follow, and we do everything according to the code. You're asking for something that's slightly extra, we're willing to accommodate you, but you need to get your information to Vera, and we'll do what we can for you.
I understand there's code, but this is a project that's going to have visibility and impact on...
Ma'am, I have no, I have no comment tonight. Alls I'm telling you is, we will do our best to accommodate the demand that you ask, that you get some notice.
And whenever, as I said, when we set the public hearing, we follow certain procedures.
Does that apply to the balloon test as well? Do we know about balloon tests inside parks?
That's what we were just discussing before, is our attorney's supposed to be here, he got caught up, he's not going to be here till 8:30. At the earliest, I don't even, is he still coming, or I don't know?
I can't get, I can't, so he might be in a...
He's probably in a...
Dead zone.
Dead zone, sorry.
I can say something?
Yeah.
That's why these residents are, I live directly across from the site, but the sign has been going down in the room for weeks. No one has even figured that out. The people are here because I, with my two children, for the two past weeks, walked and let people know that this was happening. How's it in the house? See, this needs to be properly informed. I know the code is 500 feet. We are very unique in the neighborhood that we are separated by the Taconic, so my neighbor that I see right there, they are not going to know, and I'm just asking that there is proper notice. The balloon test is to serve us, so that we can see, so things can give us notice, ample notice, so that we have the ability to see. That's all, that's what we're asking, and I think that because...
That's what we're saying, is that once we find out through our attorney what exactly they have to, we will let you know.
Because the four houses that he sent it to, that's not substantial for the people that are going to see it. No.
And just...
I appreciate the work you have already now, we will make sure...
I'll make sure I get it.
And just to remind everybody, the agenda is posted to our website, to the town website. There are two meetings a month. The first meeting, which is the first Thursday of the month, is a workshop session. It is basically for the convenience of the Board to discuss these things and come up with, you know, their thinking on it. The second meeting of the month, which is tonight, and is usually the second Thursday, is the official meeting, it's the meeting at which all actions are taken. So you can check the website on a regular basis, any information is there, and if it's, if an item is on the agenda, it will be noticed, and it will be put on the website. And as I said, if we have your email, once a public hearing notice is ready, we'll make sure you get a copy of it.
Okay. Now, we're going below the line.
I go below the line.
I am. I just made sure, waited for you to sit down, and then called you back up.
Sit over here.
Okay, below the line. Maniatis, if you recall, that's the simple gate relocation change. Bruce has issued a comment memo, he's come up with a, he wants a little additional work on riprapping the swale that runs along the driveway. It's been sent to Jamie at Insight, he's given me some latitude to discuss it with her, so we'll take care of that. Gail Azaka Mayet, we're waiting for information from them.
Excuse me, sorry, sorry, excuse me, the meeting's still going on. If, please, could you, if you're talking, if you mind, thank you.
Gail Azaka Mayet, we're waiting for information from them. Rapoli, we're waiting for information from them. Morrow Equipment, we did get notice that they made application to the various outside agencies, we've had no further update. Alpert, we're waiting for final information for them. White Vernon is actually under construction, we can actually take that one off.
Okay.
Murtaw, that one requires a site visit, I haven't had a chance to get out there yet. Cohen, we're waiting for information from them. Ryder, we're waiting for information from them. Our indication is that both of those, Mr. Greenberg attempt, is going to attempt to get in by May, we'll see. Lakeside Bible, we're waiting for them. The monastery, they've got one house up, we're waiting for them to finish the other house, but they haven't even started, to the best of my knowledge. Holly Winkler, they're in process. Route 52 Development, Kent Country Square, we're waiting for them. Metric Motors, Mr. Walters has taken them back to court, he hasn't, he's unavailable this evening, so I don't know what the status is, but I think that's in motion. Nichols Road, Nichols Road may be coming back in the near future. I got contacted by the engineer for Kent Manor. It looks like Kent Manor has now kind of got their footing back underneath them, and they may be coming back in to start, they may be starting construction. We have no dog in that fight, but they may be starting construction. Torres, we're waiting on them. And TJ Contracting, this seems to be a phantom, I know he has every intention of coming back, but don't know when. So that's where things fall.
Okay. Thank you very much. Who would like to make a motion to end the meeting?
I'll make the motion.
And who would like to second it? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.